Good evening Mayor and council members. We briefly bow over this at your last meeting to give an introduction to it. I've got a little bit more thorough staff presentation, but I'll try to keep it brief. Mayor, I know you always appreciate that. So this is a grant opportunity that's been being made aware through MTC, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. That's the same regional agency that encourage communities to identify priority development areas. And this is a ---- that encourage communities to identify priority development areas. And this is a -- this is an opportunity for them, MTC, to make funding available by passing it through our local Solano Transportation Authority to provide funds ---- to provide funds for planning in those same PDAs that MTC encouraged communities to form. So this grant could help the city meet some of our goals and objectives by achieving a vibrant downtown waterfront. And we can do that by updating our downtown specific plan. It's very good and has great ideas for the long-term vision of the downtown waterfront area. The long-term vision of the downtown waterfront area, but it doesn't currently include the full priority development area. So staff is recommending that one of the things that we would look at in updating the specific plan is considering adding an additional plan within the boundary so that we could come up with some more specific ideas of how it could develop in the future. We need to ensure that our downtown waterfront specific plan remains consistent when we adopt our new general plan and our new zoning ordinance, which we anticipate doing sometime in the next year or so. And we would want to look at the policies in the specific plan and also the land uses identified to make sure that they provided a continuous, consistent, thought-out plan for implementing general plan policies, but all the way down to the specific plan policies. And then one of the most exciting things that this gives us the opportunity to do is to do a complete environmental review on the downtown waterfront specific planning area because that hasn't been done in well more than a decade. So it makes it very difficult for development because they're looking at the cost of having to do a very thorough environmental review themselves, whereas if we did this done, then they can come in and do something more minor like a net debt, save money, and get the project moving much more rapidly. And then finally, because Fairfield is also looking at applying for this funding for both of their PDAs that are nearby, their south downtown PDA, which is right across the railroad tracks from us, and also their west Texas PDA, we could look at some opportunities to work together with Fairfield, certainly with separate plans, but with some ideas in mind for how what they do in their PDA could benefit ours with more customers for our businesses, more visitors to our hotel, and vice versa. We could make perhaps some greater connectivity to make it easier for our residents and visitors to get over to the port facility or whatever else they need to do in downtown Fairfield. So the relationship between the downtown waterfront specific plan and the PDA at the current time is that, as I said before, their boundaries aren't exactly the same. But many of the ideas for each of these planning tools were put together to help the city achieve its long-term vision. So a specific plan is described under state law, and it's a tool that helps a community or how we implement its general plan. And it links the policies that are adopted in the general plan with how a specific, specifically defined area is going to develop. And as I mentioned before, it needs to be consistent both with the general plan and also with any airport land use plan in the area. And our current downtown waterfront specific plan is doing a good job of protecting important Sussun City assets such as our waterfront, our train station, our historic district, the downtown destination for tourism that our hotel provides. We want to just make sure that those policies stay strong and consistent with whatever we do in the general plan. And then, as I mentioned before, the PDA is a designation that was suggested by MTC for communities that had transit facilities to look at because that having a transit facility, and in our case, the only train station in Solano County, makes us a very attractive place for many things to happen, from housing to jobs to retail to other kinds of services. And by creating something that people that live in the neighborhood can use the train for commuter purposes, we have the opportunity to also reduce greenhouse gas by encouraging people to think about using a way to get around besides their car. We had the opportunity to also reduce greenhouse gas by encouraging people to think about using a way to get around besides their car. We had the opportunity to also reduce greenhouse gas by encouraging people to think about using a way to get around besides their car. So this map, if I can have maybe John use the laser pointer to kind of -- oh, he lost her map.
Thank you, John.
There we go. The blue line that you see, that describes in general the downtown waterfront specific planning area. I'm not really sure why we have those little cutouts on the right-hand side. We don't really have those on the map. So then everything north of the blue line that's colored, those areas are part of our priority development area, but they are not included in our current downtown specific plan trajectory. So one of the things that we like to look at through working on this plan would be how we could include those, and we could come up with some greater specificity on how they might develop in the future based on the council's interests and the council's direction. So we've already done some work to make these things happen in our downtown area. And one occurred before I got here in 2009. You did a transit oriented feasibility study, and that was funded throughout the CDBD PTA grant. And that looked at opportunities for increasing land use intensity around the train station and how that could economically assist the community. And then a couple of years later, we used another CDBD PTA grant and did a senior housing feasibility study, which identified a strong market for senior housing in the downtown area, and also identified and kind of ranked some appropriate downtown sites. Then building on those two studies and the fact that we had a PDA and we had a specific plan, MTC gave us a focus grant to fund consultant services. And they brought consultants into our community who studied what could be some realistic near-term development in our downtown. And some of the things that they suggested were an additional hotel, kind of another downtown destination, that would have a restaurant that would draw from at least a regional basis, a conference center, and then they also liked the idea of senior housing in the So this grant opportunity that we're looking at is coming from a million dollars, basically, which all the Solano PDAs have the opportunity to compete for. So at the last technical advisory committee meeting at STA last week, the TAC members made a recommendation to the full STA board that two of the PDAs be funded with this money. And the two PDAs that are recommended to the full board are Fairfield's and ours. And because Fairfield can only apply for up to $750,000, and then there's a certain piece that STA keeps for administration, our request actually went up a little bit because they said the balance of the funds should come to Sussun City, and that's where the $163,000 number comes from. Now, the required local match for that is based on a federal match requirement of 11.47%. And that translates to the $18,696 a month. The good thing is that that doesn't have to be a cash match. A local match can be done with what we call in-kind. So the time that John puts in working on this, the time that I put in working on this, other people in the city staff that might help us with getting this grant managed and consultants managed, all that time can be tracked, and that equates to our local match. So in this cycle five PDA planning guidelines, there are some goals that MTC wants to see communities look at as they're looking at these downtown PDA plans. And so these key program goals are four of them. The first is to increase housing and jobs within the planning area. The second is to increase land use intensity in the planning area. The third is to increase use of all modes of transportation. And Councilman Hudson mentioned, being at the pedestrian advisory committee, where the city's done a really good job of looking at things like that already. And to locate services and retail within the planning area. So working within those program goals, you as the council still maintain local control over how this plan develops, over the way that we achieve these things. So the next steps and timing would be that from the execution of the tax agreement, we have 30 months to complete and adopt this document. So we're here tonight on March 5th for council action, directing staff whether or not to go forward with this application. Next week would be the STA board action, acting on the tax recommendation that the two funding proposals that go forward would be for Fairfield and for Sussun City. And then we would expect this to go through the MTC process and the funding to come down to STA over the next few months with grant approval and the actual funding agreement executed in August. And then because this is federal money that's getting passed through, it's going to take a while to do the federal procurement in terms of appropriate RFP, looking at consultants that can do the work, and then probably kicking the project off, I would say hopefully right after the first of the year, and then completing it not later than December of 2015. So in conclusion, staff believes that this PDA planning grant will position the city to update the downtown waterfront specific plan, which is something that we're going to need to look at after the general plan is adopted anyway. And since the city's contribution is limited to staff time, and there's no cash and outgo to do this, we think that this is a really great opportunity for the city, and we would recommend that you authorize the city manager to submit the grant application. And we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions, please. Good stuff, Mr. Hudson. Jane.
When I look at this, what I keep seeing is we work regional, and regional is not normally there for the small city, and we, of course, work for a small city. And so I am very, very concerned about that. Then when I look at it again, I see STA and MTC. And what I'm looking at there is these are bodies that are -- they don't have their weapons on. Those people are put into place. And so people in my city can't get rid of them. It's all they can do is take a look and say, gee, I don't think that was the right decision. And what we've done, and I've seen those PDA stepping in little by little, and the last step I remember seeing was then they took them in to make. And that should, as far as I can present, should interlet our hands in the first place because the people in my city have the right to say, you did it wrong, Jane, and you're out of here. And other people in my city don't have the right to say that to MTC and our STA, and that's not acceptable. And the other point that bothers me tremendously with this is that we are very unique. We're proven to be unique. We're proven to be a place to go. We have made our stand since Solano County. We are the place that people like to come to now. That wasn't always the case. So I'm very, very proud of what we've been able to accomplish. If we become regional, what worries me considerably is the fact that we no longer will be unique because, as you heard April talking, these are the requirements if we take this money. Well, these are the requirements on every city taking this money. So that means they're the exact same requirements. This is just another step in controlling a part of my concern, the city. And I have a great fear of that, but yet I can see for the good that April's talking about. I really can. There is good in this. And I believe that that's why I'm having the way out, is the good versus the bad. And I -- and another thing that, and April did tell you that, the one thing that we do have going for this if we take this grant is that we are able to vote on it tonight, if we vote yes on it, before we take the money, which is in August, we can turn around and say, no, we've changed our mind. We don't want your darn money. But if we take that money, we're stuck. We've got to respect everything they ask for. And so that is just too scary for me. I'm not going to be in favor of it.
Good. Something understands it.
Thanks, Mayor Hudson. There's a couple of things about this grant. There's a regional aspect that is irritating and causes concern, some of the same concerns in Jane Day's -- Councilman Jane Day's chair. I think my biggest concern, some of my biggest concerns, some of my biggest concerns right now is just because the PDA is there and just because the specific plan is there, how much, at least in the two areas, doesn't necessarily benefit the city? And I'm very concerned about that. We hire a lot of consultants in this city to do things from time to time, get a lot of studies, a lot of paperwork, a lot of shelf space, and consequently a lot of dust. And I'm concerned that this would be an effective use of the tax area's money. That's one of my biggest concerns. The way government works is it works by inches. We take, first it's a suggestion, then it's an alternative land use or preferred land use, then it's in our housing element, then it's in our general plan update, then it becomes part of our specific plan, and then it becomes part of the PDA. And pretty soon, you're pretty married to that idea of doing that. I have very big concerns. We'd love to be able to use $130,000, then $163,000. I think that there's a lot of really great ones we can do for it that are very flawed or flawed. I'm just not convinced that this is one of them. I feel that maybe if we point out this now, that we might be forced into doing some things that may not benefit our citizens. Thank you.
Good job.
What about this? Thanks, David. First of all, I apologize for not being here on the 26th of February when I took a much-needed anniversary trip. And this was very short notice, as I noticed in some of the emails that were exchanged. But I don't know to what extent my comments and questions were put into record, so I may just be redundant in some cases here, but I'll say it's short. We've been playing a major role in the final transportation for sustainable community plan. A big plan right here. This plan dated March 2012. I mean, we have been a vital part of this plan along with other cities that have identified PDAs, called it out for identifying PDAs. Sussun City was one of them. Vallejo was another. Back to those, Fairfield. So we have been a vital part of this. Question is, how far can we move this with the loss of one of our major revenues under redevelopment? It's gone. It's dead. Question is, is how do we, as a governing body, try and move forward instead of sideways or backwards with city and Sussun City? It's very important that we accept this PDA planning program as the next step because we've already taken several. We have developed a downtown work environment. We rehab the historic train station, the only train station for the Capitol Corridor in Solano County. And it will not go away. The VRRC and the Capitol Corridor, Twin Powers, has indicated that it will stay here if it's necessary when they build the Fairfield backhoe station. Our transit downtown, our transit town center PDA, as it's defined, along with the Fairfield downtown south PDA, they can become a reality. What I'm talking about there is the fact that everybody wants the Ag gray crossing to be opened again. What's it going to do? Well, for some reason, people from the county building, well, they're starting to realize that exercise is okay. Walk up and over. But the thing is, is this study is going to allow us to find out if we've got any engineering issues that we can go back to Caltrans with. It'll also let us know if we can go ahead and move forward to redesign the overpass to make it more user-friendly. And it also is going to give an opportunity in the sub-regional level. This is not regional. It's regional from MTC, CTC, and all those people. But from our level, we look at it, it's a sub-regional. It's working with our partners next door, the city that is on the other side of the railroad tracks, as I -- they probably say we're on the other side of railroad tracks, but they are. But the thing is, we will be working a strong collaboration with them when we apply for this and allow us to move forward at the same time they are. How would you like them to move forward all the way down to the overpass and then everything dies? This is our northern gateway into the city. The citizens want it. They've been asking for it. They said, restore the gray. I say, this is part of it. Fairfield and Sussun City do have a common interest, along with Solano County, as I had mentioned. The fact that Solano County, Sussun City, and Fairfield all want to restore that Ag gray crossing that would benefit both cities, apparently ours, because we've got the restaurants, and it's a great place to go for lunch and dinner. And if you go to Babs, it's for breakfast. But the thing is, Sussun City would greatly support Fairfield's interest in revitalizing of that area because that's the area that they want to change and fix, and we need to be with the design as it transitions across the track and into Sussun City. Who knows? We may just have a parade that actually comes from Fairfield to Sussun City again. Who knows? We used to -- The thing is, the station area plan for the historic Sussun City train depot, without a doubt, meets most, if not all, the elements of the planning manual itself. It is the only Capitol Corridor stop, as I mentioned. That is a great benefit to Sussun City. You see price of gas go up, you see people parking here, and they do make decisions with regards to what they do at night here, and they start finding out what we have in the downtown area. And eventually, they'll find out it's easier to get to our home. The question is --
How?
It's nothing wrong. It's reality. But the thing is, would it benefit us to accept a part of a grant in order to just do a study? It doesn't hurt us. In fact, this was part of our next step. We just don't have the funds. The state feels that every nickel and dime that we have as a city belongs to them, and it's wrong. So you've got a pretty good sense that because we've been involved with this, it's like putting crumbs out, and then when some animal comes over or even a child comes over to take a piece of candy you put out there, and you smack it in the hand, guess what? They're not going to come to you anymore. So the thing is, where's this money going to go? It will go someplace. This money is available. It's like on the pack in the back in the secret office of school. If we don't yell for that money and say, we can use it, then from right now out, it's going to San Antonio. The money is already there, or it's going to go to some other city. So why shouldn't we look at it? The thing is, we're not obligated to take it. All we're saying tonight is, yes, we're interested. The thing is, even if we were applying $18,000 to be matching funds to $160,000, the way I look at it is, if we can't find it, then what did we lose? We didn't lose anything. So the thing is, you've got a pretty good sense that we've been stringing them along all these years, letting them know that this is the direction we're going. We are unique. We think outside the box, and right now, this is an opportunity for them to help us. Why not pay their help? Somebody else will get the money. The money's going to be there, and it'll get sent to somebody else. And then we're going to say, why didn't we? Thank you.
That's a good point.
Well, everything you said is admirable, and I've got to thank our staff for this because I realize that they want, they realize what people like to see these things is in common. But I think this is, I think this is pushing too far in respect that we're getting away part of our existence virtually and not doing what we want to see done. We're doing what STA wants to see us do.
Well, I have to disagree with that because what they're willing to provide us for the funds for is to move our plan forward.
That's not our plan.
It's not theirs.
And that's not our plan.
Excuse me. I got a document, I got a document right here that I can tell you right now, the only thing that's been added on here is the area of the Very Anchor Parcel. I've got a specific plan that you supported and didn't want to change from 1999.
I definitely made that plan. So I think I can speak relatively well about it. The fact that it is filmed, you're incorrect.
I'm not incorrect, Jane, because it's documented right here since 1999.
Yeah, Michael, right there.
Charles, then. I understand what Councilman Sivalas said. I get what he's trying to say. But the problem that I see is that they continue to require more and more respect. Nobody would have told you, if they would have told you three years ago, the problem was going away, you would have been shocked. It would have shocked you to your toes.
I didn't believe it. Are you around to get reelected?
Exactly. Nobody would have -- So the problem, the problem I see is that each year, what becomes a, a likely to have becomes a, a one, becomes a -- becomes a, a want, becomes a need, becomes a requirement, they've taken us to the edge of bankruptcy in a lot of cases. A lot of cities are just hanging on by a thread, and now they're off with this truck change so they can redesign our neighborhoods. And, you know, there's a lot of things. We have all these ways out, we have all these little exits and things like that. We really try hard, and I know staff works their tails on it. I've had at least three, four meetings between now and the last council meeting on this particular subject, and they've worked, and worked, and worked. There's some things I like, just like the retail, the PDA will look at retail in our city. But there are things I don't like, and I don't like when we're paying, holding to someone else for money that they use in the arms. Two, I don't like when we make things nice and convenient for the same-shaped box and things like that. We have a specific plan for water front, we have a specific plan, because we want to create that character, and that historical significance for downtown. We have a specific plan for very specific reasons, otherwise we have the general plan. We got one of those. We need to be very careful, occur jealously, jealous, jealous-ass-ly. But we can defer to the property that we have in the city, because we don't have very much of it. We have to make wise decisions for the long run. We need to make sure that we have the revenue that will support our place to burn in 15 or 20 years from now. You know, that's the problem right now with pension reports. It used to be when you're a kid, they say, don't touch this stove because it'll burn you. And sooner or later, you touch this stove, it'll melt, and you get burned. Well, the problem that we have right now, what we're covering it, is we do something wrong, and we don't pay for it. We're down the road, or we're retired, or somebody's name, a park after us, or some subdivision. But the fact is, is it hurts 20 years from now. And that's the fear right now, is that what was a nice to have, what was a light to have, what was a want, what was a, a knight? As we walk down that path, all of a sudden, we've given up our ability to control our land. I think SDA's done some wonderful things in some areas, and I participate with them fully, and I support the grant opportunities when they come along. I'm very concerned, though, when they make requirements on our land use capability. Another study, another consultant. We got a lot of consultants. We got a ton of studies. There are bookshelves full of it. We have books. We actually have a storage vault with all the studies that we have. We don't necessarily, they don't necessarily get this part.
I think we've been very smart since 1986, at least. I mean, we were even, the only mistake we made is to make sure that Josiah Wais and Mr. Larmont didn't have a fight, and one of them took off and started the city of Fairfield. But then the answer is, what you need to explain to me, Mike, is you use the term "want to design our neighborhoods." What is it that we're not gonna be able to control as a governing body here? We're the policy body here. So if you tell me what we've already asked them to do in a specific time in 1999, and they won't change right now, does this work?
That's why I put the four points on it. Yeah. Okay, we all want to increase jobs. So when we say increase housing with the same amount of land, what does that mean? It means we're gonna build up, we're gonna build denser. All right? That changes the, the character of our city. Okay. Increase land use intensity. Does that sound like it's, it's helping our city, or does that sound like they're telling us how to build our city? Increase volvoes and transportation. I love volvoes and transportation, but when you can't fix your own streets, why are you building pocket towns? And then finally, service and retail, that's my area. I love the idea of getting something to study some retail services. But if they're gonna tell me how intense I have to use my land, if they're gonna tell me how many Mike towns I have to count, and if they're gonna have a consultant do it, I mean, I understand, a consultant are really smart people. But we end up, a lot of studies, and maybe not a lot of that is... And what's worse is that we're gonna have to live with this for a long time. And this is down the road, and not maybe down the road, and Jane will still be here.
If Jane doesn't tell you, go leave that one alone.
Yeah, leave that one alone.
Okay. But let's take a look at those four points up there. Increase housing and jobs within the planning area. Do we still have vacant land in the area that's been in the PDA? Answer? Yes. And what are we planning on doing it? Add housing. So therefore, we're gonna increase housing. They're not saying that we're gonna have to go seven stories. We have to protect Travis Air Force Base more than anything else, and putting things high into the air is not conducive to Travis Air Force Base. So the thing is, increase housing and jobs. I'll tell you, you start developing anything that's undeveloped downtown or anywhere in Susun City, but particularly the PDA, it's gonna increase improved jobs in Susun City. So you're gonna increase housing, and you're gonna increase jobs. It doesn't say we have to put a old darn 5,000-room apartment complex in downtown. Well, you want the area. God bless you.
Can I ask for clarification from staff about each one of those items that relate to what the current plan is in terms of what you say, increase housing and jobs within the planning area? Is that factoring what's currently there, and it has to be beyond that? Or is it starting from zero, you know, vacant? April might be helpful. Could you pull the map up that might be helpful to show what council's already done and explain how that meets these goals?
To answer your direct question, yes, they're looking for an increase from the existing number of housing units, and there are targets that they are hoping that you will be able to achieve in the PDA. So, you know, and they're relatively aggressive. I mean, I don't want to mislead anybody here. From their perspective, we've got a train station, we should try to get some housing near it, we should try to get jobs near it, we should try to get retail and services near it. So that land use intensity, yes, that's true. It is taking vacant and under-utilized land and using it more intensely. Doesn't mean it can't be single-family homes. Doesn't. It doesn't say it has to be multi-story, but it is looking for some intensity in development. So as the city manager suggested, if you look at the map, the areas, and John, maybe you can help me out here, the areas that are designated purple, here on the west side of Main Street, and then go back to that parcel, John, because not everybody is as familiar with this as the plan is yet. So that's Main Street right there that goes north and south, so it's that land, you know, on the west side of Main Street. And then parcel, the one that's identified as southern, that's the southwest corner of Highway 12 and Marina Boulevard. And both of those have been designated, as of now, on the preferred land use map that we would analyze for the general plan as mixed use. So some kind of combination of probably housing and retail housing and services, something like that. Single-family homes and strip mall would qualify. Hopefully, it would do something cooler than that.
Strip mall.
But the intensity that's already identified in the preferred land use map that the council chose, it already achieves that goal. This isn't something that's inconsistent with what the direction is.
So let me see if I'm understanding you correctly. The goals that are listed as the P program goals from the cycle five PDA are already satisfied with what we currently have listed in the specific...
With the combination of what's in the specific plan right now and what's anticipated in the general plan and the steps that we've taken so far.
It already satisfies these goals. So you're not asking us, this grant is not asking us to do anything above, beyond what this council has already decided to do over the years.
I believe that that's a true statement.
I disagree. I'll tell you where I disagree. The 30-acre Hoffman property has yet to have approved land use side, and that, it is not in a PDA, and that Hoffman property is a huge, huge economic center force, and we need to be very jealous and careful when it comes to making sure that commercial and retail traffic goes in there and not, not... We have to be careful with that piece of property.
I am so livid.
I know you agree, but you just called her that that was the state, it's all the others, and that's not consistent.
No, I'm sorry. I never said that. And you know, Councilman, you did bring up your personal issue with the colors, so I understand that.
I know. It got better.
Okay. The one farthest north is kind of a hot pink, so that's not mixed use. It's called mixed use slash commercial. And in the general plan, our direction from the council was to analyze it as commercial use, not as residential.
But it's currently zoned, mixed use slash commercial, so it could be residential?
No, it's not, it's not zoned out right now, because we haven't done the general plan yet. Because under the old general plan and the existing zoning ordinance, it's not the same as what we're analyzing for the new general plan.
So the existing on that land is commercial?
It's commercial service.
Commercial service.
So in the mixed use, we would allow, we would allow a small amount of housing.
We're not analyzing the council in the general plan. But what we're planning to do is to create policies that would allow the council to consider a project that would want to do a combination of.
But it would be, the council's decision whether they wanted that house or not.
Correct.
Okay. I've watched you. Too many years of what you've done. A good example is, go over on a Friday night, or see a little block, you just try to find a parking spot. If you've got people who almost want to smash your windows in, because if you put something in there, there's no parking. It's not so nice. One of the most damaging things that this city has done, and that I liked, and it goes to the Walmart. Walmart should have never been put up there. And you're shaking your head over there, okay? And I'll tell you why, the most valuable thing that this city had, and you destroyed it, just like Vallejo destroyed it. You had the water front. What did you do during the depression? Did you use the water? Do you know how many people from San Francisco loved coming in here and shopping in this little town and eating, and guys in restaurants? No, you did just what Vallejo did. You sold it off, and you brought in Walmart for everybody to starve to death because they can't keep their businesses for anybody to be here. There's just no parking in this town. You got boats. What did they do? You took all the buildings down, you sold food, you shipped all over, everywhere, San Francisco, everything that could've been grown here, with the crabs, from Green Valley. But you destroyed it. And you put Walmart out there. Walmart is a disgrace. I heard, thank God, they can even fill the shelves, because over in Europe, they got shut down, because they do places that their poor people were worth $50. Now you're gonna have to pay. And as far as this land that she's talking about, I think it has to do with where Lita Seaver and then Rashad, and then our Washington D.C. So you're shaking my right? Yeah. You don't have a clue on what's coming out of the pipe, do you? I would be happy. I'd like to see everyone lose their jobs. Go ahead and vote for it. You know why? Because that's what they want. They want control of you. This city has so much volume for it, and it has everything. You could go to the bank downtown, you could get a little silver egg, you could put your pennies in it. As a child, go to the bank to get heat and open it up, and then put it in your bank. You have nothing here, now you're greed. That's how I feel. Now, let's a little talk, Mr. Obama. I actually agree with the man. I think that what he's, the road he's going down since 1996, which you guys have done to this county and to the people, it's all about one rich person, or maybe 10 in the county, but I actually counted 50, that they're greed. Mr. Obama treats everybody equal. Everybody. It doesn't matter if you're Spanish, Latino, African-American, or what. I believe the man's right when he's going down, and I believe that...
I love you.
I bet it's that, Pete. I really, really wish you a little bit what you've done, and I hope you correct it, and I don't know how you're necessarily gonna act. That's for yourself, Pete.
Nancy Lee Leepsher, I'm a citizen of Susun City. And I'm here to say that we're getting to the place in our country where we need to wear those special glasses like you used to have to wear to the movies, so you can really see what you're looking at. I'm beginning to think we need those when the government makes us an offer, because we really don't know what we're looking at. And it seems to be that the goal is to exert more and more control locally. If there's one Bay Area, and if San Francisco is really big, how much do you think they care about us? Not much. And in reading over all the notes and everything, and looking at how they want to, they or us, want to increase the size of Susun City, including downtown to high density, you know the charm that there is? Yeah, we have some empty stores. Why can't we just fill them? Why do we have to go overboard and build up these great tenements on second and third floors so we can stack and pack, so we can force everybody to take the train, or learn to ride a bicycle, or walk? There is a great plan afoot to eliminate cars. They don't like them. Well, we built bike paths, and I gotta tell you, there's more paths than there are bikes all the time. So I just would want you to be very careful, and I would vote no on this, because the government never gives you a penny that they don't wrap their hands around you and extract more and more. But don't forget, they're doing it for you, because we're the government, and we're here to help you out of everything.
I recently heard a quote from Henry Ford. He said, "If you think the government is gonna take care of you, look what it did for the Indians." I think that you guys are in the same position. You got a lot of regional organizations that, basically, your Agenda 21 organizations, One Bay Area, the MTC, ABAG, this goes on and on. And when you take money from those entities, they want something in return, and basically, they want you to sell out cheap. And you get very little for it, but they get total control of the local residents, so it's not something you should be striving for. And you guarantee you're not gonna have a future if you do that. It's kind of like the city manager last meeting was talking about, sure would be nice to have a Neiman Marcus here. Well, guess what? If you have low-income housing, you have all these little grants that can be cut off at any time, you're never gonna have a Neiman Marcus here. You got Neiman Marcus because there are lots of people that have lots of money, and if lots of people have lots of money, they can provide jobs for people, they can see that things are built, there's all kinds of things that are gonna happen. But taking tidbits or trinkets from agencies that are not really got the best interests of the local citizens at heart is a guaranteed road to disaster. So I would hope that you think twice and say no to these kind of things, and try to do something that could be done locally that doesn't have strings attached. It can be done, because if you look at the history of this town, there were a lot of things that were done without the city deciding that they need to be done. There used to be hotels in numbers here, all kinds of things. You just have to be inventive about what you do, and if you come up with some good ideas, then you can move forward. But it's nobody's business if people want to drive their car, or if they want to live in a big house. The government should not... The government should not decide that and they shouldn't decide quotas about how many houses are going to be built and where they're going to be built and what kind of houses they are. I saw a Central China TV program recently. They were talking about all the buildings they have in China. Half of the high rises are empty now, they're half-built. They've had a real building boom, but I think they're going to have a real disaster there. And you guys are going to have the same thing if you don't make the right choices. So I would hope that you would say no to this kind of grant. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't like these grants. I see them popping up all over the place and they're always offered by staff. I feel like staff sits down and goes through all these books and looks for these grants. And every last time people get grants, it seems to be snipping one right or another away. What you're saying is absolutely true. Giving up your power of eminent domain, that's your sovereignty. The very power you have, the very reason you exist is to represent the citizens in this area. And if you sell that for a million dollars, that's simply crazy. It's the whole existence of why you have a city council, your city government. You know, let me entice you. Turn down the grant. I'll bet your money, they double it, just for the heck of it. I remember I used to be on the city college board in Santa Barbara and we had this big grant that we proposed or a big bond issue. And I remember I sank it, they were all upset with me, but we didn't have housing. We didn't have a place to put housing. There are other spaces around here, other parts of California that you can build in. You don't have to build right here and not for some cash payoff. Comes down to your sovereignty. Don't give it up. Do not give it up, not for that amount. I'm sorry, I just have this thing against staff and this isn't even really matching grant. 18,000, but you self-financed, you're already paying it.
Our next speaker is Isaiah Cora, bringing him back to the council.
I like the part of the sound that. I only have one thing further to say and to meet the bottom line is that Nancy Pelosi thinks free lunch.
I think that if we had foresight to see where this is going to end up, I think it would be a lot easier to make these choices. But unfortunately, we don't. And the elimination of redevelopment has made me very, very worried of new things. And in particular, things like O'Bank, some of the new ways of looking at funding things. I'm very suspicious about anybody who breaks us and then comes on and wants to do us a favor. That doesn't resonate well. I'd like to see us really take some time to look at this. I'd like to really get better, better reading. I've been looking at it for, I don't know, 10 days, studying it, studying it, studying it. And it comes, all comes down to is what are we going to have to force to do? I mean, there's a couple of big things, right? It's consultants and studies. Okay, great. And we have to do this because it's our specific plan. We need to keep it up and it needs to be cost money to do that. It would be great if we get someone to pay for it. But on the other hand, if it requires us to do something, we need to be very careful of those strengths. There'll be other variants, there'll be other opportunities down the line. I think this one, maybe this one's a, we take the pass for it. Thank you.
We haven't been looking at this for just 10 days. We've only been looking at it what we've been building since 1986, 88. I mean, think about it. The Chronicle said Sussun City, worst place to live in the Bay Area. What a wake-up call. And so we started working in a direction under the trudge and guidance of Jane Day, Gertrude Loses' era and Jim Sperring. Today, Jim Sperring is now our supervisor. He sits on the MGC. He still lives in Sussun City. Jane Day, trying to avoid anything about longevity, has been here. Has been, that's not right there. Has been here and has been a part of this. I remember the first time as a Navy man, as a citizen, that I was asked to sit on the Citizen Advisory Committee for redevelopment. How to start moving forward to rebuilding a city that has been designated as the worst place to live in the Bay Area by the time. And I'll tell you right now, it is just befaddling me that that's really a work. But then if you check the color of the sale, it probably is.
We've come a long way so far.
But the thing is, it blows me away that you're not willing to take a look at the next step of what your dream was just a short time ago. And so I really do believe that this truly is giving us an opportunity to take the next step forward. And the thing is, all it is, is a planning stage. It's not like we're going to take out another bond loan, loan, excuse me, loan, and market a bunch of bonds and get to people. This is going to be something what George likes to do. George likes to make sure we pay cash. Well, for $18,000, we get all that work. So, I mean, we're right up the track of the citizens. We're right up the track of Ms. Day, myself and Pete Sanchez, who's been a part of this. And Mike came in, said, "Say, Mike, redevelopment is gone because we've had a lot of fun being able to continue building that city at the rate we work." But the thing is, it is sad it's gone, but it's gone. And this is an opportunity to take the next step, to be able to see how we can rebuild something that we lost, that the citizens want in this town. And we do not have to go any further than this point. That's what I see as a benefit. We take the plan, we look at it and we see how we connect everything together. Remember, we are the ones that are elected here in Sussun City to protect what we have been telling people is a dream that we have. They've accepted downtown, they see what's happening, a lot of compliments. I think this is just the next step, to continue moving. And so I'm encouraging a majority, whole panel of the city management vote in favor of paying this grant.
Anybody else before I reach in? All right. Thank you all for this very passionate deliberation. One thing to note is that nothing of significant sales generating business has landed in our municipal city for many, many years. This is, it's one thing that we can do to make sure that we don't down 12 or 15 or 20 more years to put something in place to stand one of those sales generating businesses. I know for a fact that during the time that I've been here, there have been three studies or more coming from grants that are sitting on drovers gathering dust. But I know and I hope that in the upcoming years, those studies will be useful to us in some way. I'm going to down, I don't expect me to turn down $160,000 from Uncle Sam. No way. I will not turn down $160,000 from Uncle Sam. If I don't take this money, others in cities, other cities with fluoride in their water will take this money. Those people who, some speakers have said have lower IQ, they will take this money. Why don't I take, why don't I take it now? So let me see if there is a motion in the second to approve staff recommendation.
I'll make the motion to approve the recommendation, this app with regards to the just eight.
I agree.
Just eight, I agree.
I second it.
There's a motion in the second. Vote for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. What votes?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you so much. We'll be going to item number 90, Council of the Department of President of the Senate, after that, we have all the private support and implementation of the city of Sussun City Housing Management for 2012, state and private support that attracted the public to the main city.